Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Happy New Year. Today's our first meeting of the 2023 calendar year. It's January the 10th. We'll call this meeting to order at 6:31 PM. All rise, please, and the lovely Kathleen will lead us in the pitch.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Board members, may I have a motion, please, in a second that we approve tonight's agenda as submitted?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Thank you. May I have a motion, please, in a second that we approve the consent agenda as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Thank you. There's no treasure reports this evening, so that brings us to special reports. Dr. Putnam.
Sure. We do have a couple of special reports. Before, though, I have a little housekeeping. If any of our visitors here or board members need to use the restroom. The restroom by the commons is offline for the moment, but there is a hall monitor at our main entrance, and he can let you into restroom. So I don't know why I'm talking about restrooms at a board meeting, but I want to make sure everybody feels comfortable. So we do have two special reports. Our first will be students from our PHS Mosaics Club. So if the students want to come up, I think you might need to bring a couple chairs, and your advisor, I think, might be here, too, if you guys want to come on up. And then our second will be an overview of enrichment program evaluation. So we do have, we're working with BOSI's to do an overview of our district's enrichment program, and Christine Treasure is going to be here just to talk a little bit through that process. A reminder, Mosaics came, I think, in 2021? Was it that long ago?
Yes.
And spoke with the board and had reached out to come back again. And so if you, students wouldn't mind just introducing yourself and your grade level, and then you have some slides, and you have a clicker there that should work, and the floor is yours.
Oh, great, okay. Hello. First of all, thank you so much, esteemed board, for having us here tonight. We're very grateful and excited to get into our presentation. Violet, you want to introduce yourself?
Hi, my name is Violet Tedesco, and I'm a junior.
Hello, my name is Nora Khan. I'm a senior, and I'm the president of Mosaics.
I'm Robert, I'm Robert Dorsow. I am the treasurer of Mosaics Club, and I'm in 11th grade.
I'm Victoria Bobina. I'm a junior, and I'm the vice president of Mosaics Club.
All right, so now we're going to get started. Okay. So yeah, we already introduced. Great. You can click ahead, Robert. Thank you. Okay, so we wanted to start off with our PHS Mosaics Club vision. This has pretty much been the same the past few years because we hold the same ideals in mind when we enter our weekly, or biweekly, sorry, every two weeks, Monday meetings. The purpose of our club is to promote awareness and appreciation for all types of diversity within our school. We work to create opportunities for education and comfortable discussion between staff and students about racial diversities, and as aforementioned, this expands to all types of diversities because we know there's not just one kind when we hear the word diversity. We also engage faculty and students in the ongoing challenge of making our school welcoming to all races and backgrounds. As we know, this can be a huge ordeal, and we think it's important as students to be a part of this workforce. And we also inspire students and staff to appreciate each person for who they are and who they can be because every day, everyone should feel celebrated and welcomed while walking into each and every district building.
Again, thank you so much for the opportunity that you provided us with presenting to you. And as Dr. Putnam previously mentioned, we did come in 2021 to discuss changing the district calendar from Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. When we presented, we envisioned having the day changed fully to Indigenous Peoples' Day, and the calendar was changed to Indigenous Peoples' Day hyphenated Columbus Day. And while we recognize that this is a step in the right direction, we think that there is more to be done regarding this.
Thank you. By hyphenated Indigenous Peoples' Day along with Columbus Day, Penfield sends the message of celebrating both indigenous people and their culture along with Columbus and the atrocities committed against the indigenous people in a joint holiday, basically marrying the oppressor Columbus and the historically oppressed group of people, in this case, indigenous people. As of quite recently, in our history and social studies classes, we have been learning more about Columbus and the atrocities that he has committed rather than as the great figure that he's usually made out to be. As many people are now aware of this, why shouldn't this be reflected in our calendar?
We have a responsibility to properly represent the history of the indigenous people whose land we reside on. Indigenous people have had a huge influence in our area and on ourselves through the names of our towns, the food that we eat, the inventions we use, and even the games that we play, such as kayaking and lacrosse.
And we actually, as a group, we did some research to understand what are our neighboring communities and school districts actually doing with their district calendars, just to get some input and some information. And we found that only other, only one other school district has really made this change fully from Indigenous Peoples' Day, Columbus Day, or either fully Columbus Day to solely Indigenous Peoples' Day, and that has been Spencerport. And there are other schools like Fairport, Webster, and Brighton that have hyphenated or still simply recognized this day as Columbus Day. And we think it's really important that we understand where we are right now in our district calendar. We're hyphenated, and we're here tonight to ask you to help us make that change.
So in order to be the institution that we really pride ourselves on being as leaders in diversity and inclusivity, we think as a club that it's very important and crucial that we change from Columbus Day slash Indigenous Peoples' Day fully to Indigenous Peoples' Day. We already have made some steps in the right direction with changing our mascot from the Chiefs to the Penfield Patriots, and we have led numerous, you know, like, community initiatives such as Penfield Promise, which other districts in the area have kind of taken similar initiatives to help people within our area that are not as fortunate as us.
And then one last point. Some may have the question or the point of, but you're erasing our history. Columbus was a person that did real things in American history, and why should we not talk about him? And that's actually not, that's a good point because he is, Columbus, his actions and the effect of his actions, the consequences of his actions are something we will always need to understand, and it will be imperative to understanding American history and colonial impact in this continent. Columbus is not erased at all. He's still very much taught in schools because, as I mentioned before, you can't teach American history without mentioning him and the influence of colonialism. And so as students, as individuals, and as learners in the world, we think that however, it's important to not include his name because when we sell, use days and the titles of days, we're using those to honor, memorialize, and respect people. And we don't think that Columbus, Christopher Columbus, deserves this type of title and appraisal. So that's why we think we should really just keep this day solely for indigenous people because they have such an important impact, not only in the past, but also in the present and in the future. And they're a really big part of our learning and our path to continued success in our school district. And then are there any questions or concerns or comments?
That was wonderful. Thank you. Board members, are there questions or comments for the club members?
I have a comment. Can I comment? I would just applaud you as young adults really taking the lead in trying to be an agent of change because as a school district, that's what we always want to do, and I think that's incredible that you came up here, you voiced in front of an audience of people. You were cool, calm, and collected, which I'm not always cool, calm, and collected. So I just really think that's awesome that you're leading the cause, and you're leading the change, and you're trying to do what's best for others. So kudos to you. Keep that up.
Thank you.
I would share the same just as a superintendent and having this time of special reports. You know, the club reached out to my office to get on the calendar, and we always want to hear from students. And so very well-prepared and a very strong sort of argument with your evidence and some research you did, and we really appreciate that. And, you know, I can tell you that especially when we hear from students, it's something that as a district, we're going to go back and dig in a little bit and reach out to others and see sort of what the next steps are. And I'd be happy to come over and meet with the Mosaics Club in one of your upcoming meetings just to talk through a little bit more and let you know what I found out, too. Okay?
Great, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
And really quick, if there aren't any additional questions or comments from board members, we have some fact sheet we'd like to hand out to you guys, just so you can have something to refer to throughout tonight.
If you hand those to our incredible Ms. Astrodun at the end, she'll make sure that the board gets them after the meeting.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
That was really wonderful, thank you.
Our next special report, it's going to be very difficult to follow an act of four incredible students, but we have Ms. Christine Treasure, who's, the clicker should work for you. And you could also just introduce your title and role at BOSI's, and then we're just going to do an overview of the enrichment program review here in Penfield.
Yeah. That was exactly my thoughts, Tom, as far as I have to follow them? That's not easy.
Every board meeting, I have to follow our student rep, and she makes me, she does this great stuff, and then I have to, you know, bumble through mine. So welcome to the club, but you'll do a great job.
So my name is Christine Treasure, and I am the director of school improvement, the Office of School Improvement at Monroe One BOSI's. I also oversee our model schools, COSER. So school improvement is a service that supports instructional programming across the region. So I work with our 10 Eastside Monroe County school districts as well as Monroe One to support, again, instruction and curriculum instruction work. So I was asked to do this work here in Penfield as a program review, and I'm going to start off with giving just some context building, some overview. Program reviews can be done in a variety of different ways, but generally speaking, the process is to really look at the what, the why, and the how. And so a program review provides an opportunity to examine the extent to which an instructional program or model fulfills your stated mission. And in this case, so we're looking to assess strengths and challenges of the current program and determine if your model is fulfilling your stated mission and make recommendations to make adjustments as needed. The question that was posed initially was, does the current enrichment program afford all students the opportunity to access the program and related services? So when I started looking at different program models and working through, like, the process and the structure that we decided to move forward with, we, I would consider this a formative model, so beginning steps, beginning stages of looking at both qualitative and quantitative data, so to analyze for gaps, trends, patterns. And, and you can do that both internally, exclusively internally with a committee of internal folks or externally, completely externally, or somewhere in the middle. And so we, we're considering this kind of a hybrid review because I'm an external evaluator, so to speak, as a consultant working with BOSI's, but I also have a unique perspective because I was an enrichment teacher and a project challenge teacher here in Penfield. I started my career in Penfield. I started at Bay Trail. I taught sixth grade and then enrichment six, seven, eight, and then I moved to Scribner and taught the Gifted and Talented Program, Project Challenge and Enrichment at Scribner for a number of years, and then served as a teacher on special assignment supporting curriculum and instruction before I moved on to an administrative position and into this position. So again, I have some background and knowledge that, you know, affords me the ability to kind of ask some questions in terms of my experience past to present. Currently, what we've done at this point, what's been done so far, is really a review of documents, looking at your website content, looking at the board policies. So you have an enrichment policy, 8245, looking at curriculum documents. I would not say I have done, the curriculum documents, there are many. There's a lot of content and resource and material. It's clear that your educators are providing and working towards codifying their curriculum regularly and reviewing it. So there's a lot. So I've done an initial kind of look at that, but that's a piece we're still in process. And then really looked a little focused on documents related to the identification process specifically for project challenge at the elementary level and communication to families. So parent letters and communications that are sent home, as well as started an initial data review. So I've done some analysis and shared initial glance of analysis of the demographics of students who have, who were identified with a need for gifted services, which can start at third grade in the project challenge program, but goes through. And so I've looked at fourth, current fourth grade students through your 12th grade students. Have come up with some questions, again, some patterns and trends, but things, again, that I would want to do more analysis of. And then I also reviewed a family survey that was conducted in 2122. In addition to that, I've met with Leslie several times, Dr. Maloney, around the program, the structure, and some of the work that I've done initially. I've met with your K-12, the K-12 Director, Department Chair of Enrichment, and the curriculum directors. So those are the things that have happened to this point. Then from there, these are kind of our next steps. So some of the next steps are to complete the document review, continue to gather input, and look at the data more explicitly so I can finalize kind of my findings that way and share those results, and then gather input from more stakeholders. So I have met with the department chair and had a recent meeting with the elementary teachers, but we are scheduled to meet as a full group and to follow up with individual meetings with all of your enrichment teachers, and then look for ways to survey both grade-level teachers, administrators, families, and students. And so once those pieces are put together, we would come back, I would come back with and share my findings and recommendations at that point. That is, that is in a nutshell, in terms of where we are right now and what the process has looked like. Questions?
Board members, questions? No?
I have a question.
Oh, you do?
Can you tell us right now, currently, how elementary students are identified for project challenge?
So I can. I can tell you that with, you know, with COVID, that process has changed in the last couple of years. So there are two steps to the process. There's a first step where all students at second grade go through experiences with the enrichment teachers, with the project challenge teachers pushing into the classroom. And then that information is collected, and there's a second step in the process where students are then seen in small groups to do additional student work, and they collect that student work in conjunction with results of the Otis Lennon assessment that's given and other information that's looked at. Now, I say that in that that was the process with COVID. There were some modifications that had to be made because students were not in the building. So there's, that is one of the things I will say in looking at the identification process. Now, it's challenging to say from the data, given things, changing in the process in the last couple of years, how that has, what impact that truly has at this point. So I've kind of looked at that initially. But it's a two, what I would consider a two-pronged approach of steps that are taken at the end of second grade, and then follow-up work at the beginning of third grade before students are then identified. I know you had a presentation that was given to families that talked about, at New York State, for New York State, we're required to screen. There's a requirement to screen from New York State, but that really is the extent to which and parents are to be notified based on that screening for potential for giftedness. And that's really all that comes forward from the state guidance around how, what process districts can use.
And students who join the district after third grade?
So there are-
Like maybe in fourth, still in elementary school, but maybe fourth or fifth grade.
So yes, every year, they do have a process in place to look at students at entry points after that third grade year. It includes collecting of student work, student data, teacher recommendations. And again, at the sixth grade level, they've added a new screener that they utilize to collect data around creative thinking, critical thinking, and visual spatial knowledge. So that piece is in place. I know it's a place where I think there, that there are some questions around exactly that process and how well that's spelled out.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. I just thought of it. In all your data analysis and all the information that you're collecting, are you also collecting the effect that, the effect of being in enrichment or project challenge has socially and emotionally on these folks, these children?
So at this point, we have the parent survey that was conducted in 2022, or 2021, but that is an area where we need to collect more information in terms of finding that out from both student point, because that was a parent. That was a family survey.
Parents and students can have very different points of view. So, and I would more value the children's point of view.
Yes, so we, I have not, I have not at this point done any direct work with students to ask those questions. So that's part of-
I was just wondering if there was like a survey or, you know, something that the kids or I guess the parents could fill out, and we can get some feedback, you know?
And we've talked about both the idea of a survey and/or focus groups, so bringing students in and asking some focus groups, focus group questions. So part of the thing, part of the piece, I would say, within the process is I work very closely with Leslie to kind of work through the questions we are asking and the process we're taking to decide. So that's, again, we've had conversation about focus group and enrichment questions in the survey. I'm not sure whether both will happen or one or the other. We kind of have to make some of those decisions.
You have a lot on your plate, and I wish you all the luck. And I also appreciate that you can see both sides as an administrator and as a teacher. You know, like you were on the ground doing the work, and you have great knowledge with the material and the children, and so I appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, in the end, it will be recommendations and suggestions for the district to move forward. I don't think it's the end, you know, I'm not the end-all, be-all either. There will be work to do out of what those recommendations are. It's really to kind of start, start you off on that process of where are the areas to focus on and to support. I really appreciated my time in Penfield. I loved being here, and I'm, one of the things I love about being at Monroe One now is being able to connect again with, with the districts because I just, again, had a really great experience here.
And Christine did not highlight this, but Christine is an expert, very comfortable with the culturally responsive sustaining education framework, and she facilitates professional learning and connects with the state education department on the culturally responsive sustaining education framework. So her work at BOSI's around DEI, coupled with her experience in gifted education, it just, it felt like a perfect match. And so I look forward to her findings and recommendations, and I thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Wait, I'm not done. Sorry. You guys were all talking, and I didn't get my questions yet, so. I have a long list here. I don't have a long list. I actually have one question for you, and I think I might have one question for you because I'm not quite sure. Do you envision bringing in, I'm curious what other districts are doing? Are there models that people are steaming to that, you know, that we need to be looking at? Is that something that you feel that you're bringing?
So again, I've done an initial blush. So I reached out to, within our region, that I know of at this point, there are about three or four other districts that have a program or versions of, that have teachers that are serving in the capacity of providing enrichment service. So I've reached out, I've heard back from a couple. Most of them, I kind of gave some initial questions, and then they've all been very gracious to say, if you want to talk further, reach out. So that's kind of my next step with those districts, is to really reach out to the teachers and ask some questions. And then with the, being that I'm connected to the state, I reached out to our statewide network that I have for professional learning. I only heard back from one district. And again, that was one where I've gotten an initial information from the district, but I, they didn't necessarily say I could call, but I'll be calling to see if I can get some more details around that. So it's a great question in terms of like, what are other places doing? And looking at that piece as well as, I didn't reference in the slides, but we are, we have been looking at other resources, too, to guide and inform the work as, such as the National Association for Gifted Children. They have standards, and they were just updated in 2019 with a focus on equity. That is definitely something that that national organization has started to look at. And in North Carolina, they have some work done there that I've, I've shared with Leslie and kind of as an initial blush. Some, they have like six call-to-action steps in terms of looking at programming when you're thinking about supporting students who may have needs on that end, you know, high-ability students or other gifts and talents that you want to foster and support. So those are a couple of the other resources, but district-wise, that's what I know right now. I will include that then in terms of what other information I can glean from, from both local and maybe statewide.
Great, awesome. So my second question is, it was always my understanding when we do assessments for the RTI model that we have that, you know, like diamond shape, right? So we have students that need challenge and then students that need to come up to grade level. So when I think of enrichment, is that the, I mean, I know this is a little different when we're doing this pull-out project challenge, but we're also challenging all students when we do those day-to-days, right? Are we still doing that?
K-5.
K-5? Okay. That was, I was just wondering if that's part of this process? Like, are we looking at that holistically? Are we just looking at that piece?
Well, so Lisa, actually, that part of our program, so, was new for Christine. So when Christine taught here, the element, at the elementary, the enrichment teachers taught project challenge and then also consulted with K-2 grade-level teachers. And since that time, we have, currently, our enrichment teachers at the elementary level, they teach project challenge for grades four and five, and then for third grade after students are identified. And then they also service, provide services during the RTI times. So they work with students in math as well as in ELA and reading. So, yeah, it's a, it's a very, I actually attended a conference, a national conference at the beginning of December and was able to make some connections, some national connections with other districts. And our program is very unique in the sense that our enrichment teachers not only do, at the elementary level, not only are they providing the project challenge, but also the RTI supports. And then at the middle school, the school-wide enrichment model as well. So it's very interesting. For example, Tennessee, the students who are gifted have IEPs. And that's, that's a state, that's how their state approaches gifted. So there's lots, there's lots to learn and gather from, and really Christine has been very helpful in bringing all of it together.
Well, I'm glad you're here, Christine. Thank you. Are there other questions?
Are there other questions for Christine?
I just have one question for Leslie. Our, our project challenge enrichment teachers, what support do they get in order to keep doing the best that they can do for our kids?
So there used to, this is a great question, Krista. There used to be a consortium that was facilitated by Monroe Two BOSI's and it was really the whole region, not only Monroe BOSI's, but I knew teachers that would come from very far to participate in that consortium. As with other things in our world, when COVID came along, it, people retired and it never came back. But we just had a, we're very fortunate. Carrie Young is our department chair, our K 12 department chair for enrichment. She is here. The district has always allocated an enrichment conference budget. So our enrichment teachers, we just had a teacher come back from the national conference. Our teachers do have that budget to access to be able to collaborate with other enrichment teachers and go to conferences.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Christine.
Thank you.
And that concludes special reports.
All right. So that gives us to our student rep.
Hi, Lila. Good evening.
Oh, what? All right. So the board meetings are, are meetings held in public, but not public meetings. So if you have a question, you can email me directly and I'll get you an answer. Thank you.
Good evening. So just to start off with a couple of PHS updates. So before the break, students caroled around the building and also went to local nursing homes to provide some holiday cheer before the break. And Penfield DECA did very well at the regional competition at RIT with many students moving on to the state competition in the spring. The wrestling team is hosting Victor tonight for their senior night and they are taking non-perishable food donations as a continued part of the Penfield promise. Last Friday, students participated in the wellness fair sponsored by Sources of Strength during lunches. This gave students the ability to learn about their different strengths and have fun with their friends. PHS also had its very first elective fair where students could look at the different electives offered and ask current students that have taken the course, questions about the course. During senior seminars, Deputy Fong gave a presentation about safe driving. And the Model UN Club participated in the Central New York Model UN Conference at Syracuse University over the weekend where multiple students won awards. At Bay Trail, seventh graders are learning how to play the guitar and general music. Sixth graders in enrichment wrote persuasive letters to the International Olympic Committee against the inclusion of esports in the Olympics. In return, they received a letter of recognition and Olympic pins. At Scrivner, students made a display case showcasing their favorite books with a small tribute to the Buffalo Bills. At Harris Hills, students made holiday decorations where they wrote about how they can use their own sense of kindness to brighten someone else's day over break. At Cobble's, in music classes, first graders are composing and performing their own rhythm patterns. And at Indian Landing, before the break, students participated in the annual holiday Helping Hands to provide for Indian Landing families in need. Thank you.
Thank you, Lila. Questions? Comments? No?
Thank you.
I know, nice job as always. All right.
Do I have to go?
Now to your turn. No.
All right. So the only thing I got over Ms. Harvey is I have photographs. So do we have a clicker? Is it right in front of me? Okay, great. Thanks, Dan. So just superintendent reports this evening. I just have a few student and staff honors. I have one slide and then I'm going to turn over to Dr. Driffl for some business updates. So congratulations to our athletes who received all greater Rochester first team honors for the fall season. I will not read everybody's name, but they're in your agenda. And again, some incredible students. I will mention Nicole Bell for volleyball, named co-player of this year, along with Anna Gutman for girls volleyball. And, and again, our athletes do some incredible things. And one of the things I've always loved about Penfield is it's student athlete, so it's student first and really making sure that they work well in the classroom as well. So this is where I get a picture, which is ELA honors. So as mentioned, Bay Trail students in sixth grade participated in an enrichment unit for persuasive writing. And there are a number of topics, one of them being should esports be in the Olympics? Should schools assign homework? Should animals live in the zoos? And the students who had written about Olympics asked their teacher, Cheryl Moon, to send their letters on to the IOC president, who then did respond with some Olympic pins. And it's pretty cool. And the first thing I thought when I saw that was a long time ago, my parents lived in LA for the summer, for the Summer Olympics in 84. And I had to live with my grandmother, which was really exciting. But they came back with pins and those Olympic pins sell for like thousands of dollars. They trade pins at the Olympics. So I'm hoping our sixth graders might be able to hold on to those and, and maybe, you know, get some college textbooks paid for. But very, very cool. Holiday giving, again, lots listed in the agenda to take a look at. I'm always proud as, as a parent, as a superintendent, as a community member, how much our staff and students and families give back to all around Penfield and beyond, around holiday giving. And just, you can see the picture there at Harris Hill, just the number of goods that were, were collected for families, students in need, not just in Penfield, but around the area. So my update, I'll shift to is just really one, is that, it's a plug for tomorrow night. So here is a reminder of our community conversations that have put, been put together for this year. And we did have our ready this year, a family composition presented by Zach Evans, and that was held in person back in September, which feels like a long time ago. A plug for Zach Evans, that one of the reasons he was able to come is he's a Penfield grad. And so, you know, love to see our students go on to have great careers and, and he was a wonderful presenter. And then we also had the Children's Institute in October that really worked through prioritizing social emotional learning. And that was virtual. We did have scheduled Indigenous People and the History of Penfield by Jemison and we, sorry, Ansley Jemison. And we, that was postponed due to a conflict at the last minute with our presenter. So we're working through that. But tomorrow night is Justin Murphy, many know as a reporter for the DNC, but many of us know as a Penfield grad. So Justin did go through Penfield and he wrote a book called Your Children Are Very Greatly in Danger. And we had a number of community book reads, thanks to our assistant director, professional learning, Kevin Marriott, and work through a number of people in our community, staff and families were involved in that. And Justin is here to present on that topic. That will be in the auditorium here at the high school in person tomorrow. And I'll just say, you know, Justin is, the book is the dense. It's been wonderful to read. It really has opened my eyes and many others and just great conversation. So I'm looking forward to this. And as a reporter, Justin asks really hard questions. And so I'm, I'm happy he's here to present for us and not interview me for things he's done in the past. But, but he's a proud Penfield grad and many of our teachers remember him. And so the last one as a plug for is our code of conduct update. Those of you who tune into the board meetings know that we talk once a month and give an update on the code of conduct committee that's been working since this summer with multiple stakeholders. And the Children's Institute, who's been working with us to lead that work and help bring it all together. Our plan is to present in March, end of March, and that will be in person. All of these dates are on our webpage as well. And just wanted to encourage folks to, to come out. Hopefully we have some decent weather. You never know. It's Rochester in January, so it could be 90 tomorrow and we'll, we'll see how it goes. And then just any questions, I said one slide, but I know Ms. Harley has a question for me.
Is tomorrow being recorded?
That's a great question. I can't remember. I don't think it is. Yep. So Justin, part of it is around obviously with authors and their work. There's no cost with Justin. He's, he's doing it for, you know, being a Penfield grad and such, but not recorded.
Thank you.
No problem. Oh, yeah.
Were you done? I mean, are you ready for?
Yeah, let me go, let me start. Does anybody have any questions?
So glad you asked.
Yeah.
What are esports?
So esports are online gaming sports. So there actually is a lot of talk in New York State. They're doing some trialing and piloting of esports as part of interscholastic sports. And, you know, it is one of these pieces where I will just share with you, there's probably a generational gap with that. And I'm past the completely understanding it, like I'm not cool and hip at all anymore. But some really interesting things, not to put a plug in, but Bill Nye, the Science Guy, did a Netflix series recently. And, and the esports, like there's a lot of money behind it. Like people are really earning a lot. It's definitely not athletic, you know, in the sense of running and things, but it's sort of that, that mind work and the, the mental work. And it's really interesting. So again, I think many of our students wrote on the fact that they shouldn't be in the Olympics, but it's just an interesting piece. So esports really is electric gaming, online gaming. Where you're working with people across the world or sitting next to you to play, there's typically sporting events online.
Okay. Thank you for that. I would have thought that, you know, I, I was getting it confused with AI stuff because AI is, is just getting into everything. And so I wanted to be clear about what I was thinking about it.
Yep.
But the other thought I had was, are we like zooming sporting events? That was the other thought I had. So I needed.
So it makes sense. It's really like.
I needed a little clarification there.
Yeah.
My mind went all over the place with that.
It's really fascinating that, you know, but it's one that I know that the New York State Athletic Organization has been kind of looking at and trying to figure out. The one piece, and I'm not here to talk about esports, but the one piece is that it really, there's this piece about bringing kids together who wouldn't typically maybe be on a team, right? So there's one thing to like love, understand, totally get and be able to compete in the concept of football versus playing football. So again, I think where, where the state's kind of looking at it and dabbling and again, there's organizations that are completely focused on esport, is how to you, how do you engage the mind? How do you engage people who might not be the ones on, on the field? So it's really interesting.
All right, that's.
Then again, you could also be like a great quarterback and an esport football quarterback, but I don't want to say you can't do both.
Right. I mean, it's an interesting concept, but I couldn't even go into an opinion about it if I didn't quite understand what it was.
Yeah. And I don't think I did any service trying to explain it, but.
No, I, no, you did to me.
If we go further, we'd definitely be looking, but right now it's just persuasive essays.
And there was some, at the conference, there was some clubs that they're doing some after school clubs. And I think I brought Leslie some information. There was a couple of people there. So it's, it's definitely out there. I don't know, you know, how.
We have had some conversations and I know we sort of tried to trial and then COVID hit and things, you know, in terms of the, the after school club piece, but.
Yeah. I mean, you can see clubbing or clubs. You can see that and you can see teams, but I can't see sports there.
Right.
So I, obviously that's the conversation.
Absolutely.
And things behind the essays.
Yep.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any other questions?
It's question night.
That's great. I will now turn it over gladly to Dr. Driffl for some business updates.
Thanks, Dr. Putnam. Good evening, board. Happy New Year to everybody. Just a few business items for you on your agenda later this evening. The first of which is the approval of the budget development goals, guidelines and factors that we reviewed at our last meeting on December 6th. So there's been no modifications to that draft that was presented. It's, it's the same, same form as the one last month. We have a approval request for you for facility use and service contract with RIT. So this will be for graduation this year. We have done graduations at RIT in the past. Last couple of years we did it at Frontier Field, looking to move back to RIT this year. The reason we're bringing it to board approval is, like many things, the cost has gone up a little bit and it's just over $20,000. So in accordance with board policy, we request Board of Education approval to engage RIT for that, that event. We have two audit actions that require approval this evening. The first of which is the extra classroom audit report. So that's our extracurricular clubs, things like robotics, things like esports and, you know, dozens of others that we have here at Penfield. The reason that those clubs exist is to give kids a real life example into money, into fundraisers, into profit and loss statements. There's a student treasurer that keeps the book. There's a faculty advisor that keeps the books. They operate under our umbrella, so we're responsible for, you know, conducting an audit of those. But as you'll see in a moment, there are a couple of recommendations. Almost every single year, there's recommendations for these. We, our, our district treasurer works very closely with the two building treasurers, the central treasurers, to train everybody and try to get everybody up to date. But there are a couple of recommendations there that do require corrective action, of which we have proposed for you. And then the single audit report, I don't know why it's called single audit report, but it's called, it's the federal funds audit report. So every dollar that comes from the federal government, we have to audit those as part of any district that receives more than $750,000 in federal funds. So we have to do that annually as well. So that extracurricular audit report, as I mentioned, there were three recommendations. The first of which is profit and loss statements signed for fundraising activities. So this is actually a carryover from last year. So there were three clubs that were discovered last year that in the course of their fundraising activities, they didn't keep the proper money in, money out to run that fundraiser and make sure that it was signed by the faculty advisor and student advisor. This year, I think there was at least one club that had that same issue. So it stayed on the report as a recommendation to fix that. Timely deposits. We try to have all cash turned into the bank within 24 hours. There was a scenario where somebody was actually out sick. The money was secure, it was in a safe, but it was not turned over to the district treasurer timely. So it was written up by the auditors as an untimely deposit. And then there was a incorrect sales tax calculation that was done by one of the clubs. What they did was essentially, I think, divide by .08 instead of multiply by .08. It's a good learning opportunity because unlike the school district, which is tax exempt, all of the clubs are taxable entities. They're, they're treated as taxable. So our district treasurer created them a spreadsheet that they should be able to utilize in the future. But again, it was discovered in the audit, so the auditors did note it in the report. On the single audit side, so this is the federal funds. So this is our, the title money that we receive. It's the IDA money we receive. It's the money we receive for the national school lunch and breakfast program. And then this year, also the federal funds, the stimulus funds that we've been receiving. So the total federal flows for the last fiscal year were just shy of $5 million between all of those different funds. That's about double what we usually have, based on the stimulus money that we've received and also based on the lunch waiver last year. We had much more participation in the meal, the meal programs. So our food service revenue is up quite a bit. There were no prior year recommendations or current year recommendations associated with that report. So there was no associated corrective action required. And that's it for me tonight. Any questions about any of those four action items?
Questions for our members? No questions?
I was just curious. I don't remember the students having to do profit and loss statements. Is that new or they've always had to do that?
No, it's been a long time requirement. Yep.
That's good. I mean, you know, like, yeah.
I'm always at the, the extracurricular clubs and haven't been through this for a while, both as high school principal in this role is, is there's always, I hate to sound not completely positive, but there's always going to be a finding we find with the audit reports. Cause we're talking about their students, their full-time students, their, and they meet and, but everything has to be in their minutes, just like a, an organization would. And so it's, it really is a good learning opportunity and, and, you know, Bill, Bill Maloney, our, our district treasurer, as well as Dan's office, works with our, our building treasurers to help with that. And then we can clean it up really well and help them. And then those kids graduate and then the next year, there's a new treasurer and we're back to the, the races of trying to go through. So it really is a good learning experience and, and some of our clubs, not all of them fundraise, but some of the bigger ones, you know, have money coming in and money going out. And again, it's, you know, they're looking for obviously, you know, sort of the, the big things like fraud and anything like that. None of that's there, but it really is just making sure that you keep track of it. Now, one that I know always comes, it's like if you sell tickets to a dance and then you've got to number the tickets and kind of know exactly what goes out. So it's really good learning for our students. But our students keep leaving us to go on to better and brighter things, so we start over again. But Dan's office is great. The auditors have been awesome and, and it's great learning.
Thank you.
Believe it or not, that concludes superintendent reports.
Awesome. All righty. Okay. So that brings us to our public comment period. Instructions to participate in the public comment period are listed in your. Instructions to participate in the public comment period are listed in your agenda and also available online. The Board will not be responding to comments during this session. Any concerns raised will be referred to the District Administration for follow-up when appropriate. Speakers are expected to identify themselves with their name and address and limit their comments to three minutes or less. Please do not name a specific student or staff in public session and be respectful in your words, conduct, and demeanor. We have four speakers this evening. Our first speaker is Ms. Murray. Good evening, Ms. Murray.
Dana Murray, 1690 Cultural Road. I've had many discussions, or I've heard many discussions at previous board meetings about the mandate that school buses must be emissions-free effective 2027. Astronomically large investments related to the needs associated with these buses, in addition to information about how emergency responders have needed specialized training on how to respond in the event of an emergency with an electric bus versus a standard bus. While it is acknowledged that the district must follow state guidelines and regulations, these are ultimately followed for the purpose of protecting students and staff and to enhance and better support existing and anticipated needs. If you were told via a mandate to do something that you knew would have potential to harm or put a child or staff member at risk, from an ethical or legal standpoint, would you be comfortable taking that risk? Or would you take on the responsibility to advocate to the appropriate entities that the mandate is not in the best interest of students and staff? The safety risk that comes with the use of these buses is extremely concerning. Lithium-ion battery fires are extremely difficult to extinguish related to the thermochemical process that occurs. Over the past year, there have been electric bus fires reported in Connecticut, Pennsylvania, Florida, and Paris. Please see this visual display of an electric bus that caught fire in Connecticut on July 23rd, 2022. I recently spoke with a friend who manages one of the top 10 largest electric bus fleets in the country. There are many details that must be considered related to the technical aspects of maintaining an electric fleet of buses. These include 24/7 staffing to ensure fail-free charging, a backup plan for when a charger goes bad, staff training for managing high-voltage electricity, OSHA regulations that need to be met with these new risk factors in addition to extensive long-term expenses that come with the maintenance of an electric bus fleet with limited vehicle warranties. Electric buses are limited on how far they can be driven on a charge, with need to consider that in the winter months, buses need to be heated, which will drain the battery much faster, significantly shortening the expected road time on a charge. No parent wants to receive that call that their child is not coming home if one of these new electric buses encounters a devastating emergency. I urge the district to advocate at legislative meetings and to New York State lawmakers to please reconsider this law. Aside from concerns of excessive cost, the technology is clearly not ready yet to be mandated for electric bus deployment in a way that ensures student and staff safety. I encourage you to team up with other surrounding districts to do the same. There is opportunity to do this at the New York State School Board Association Lobby Day on February 15th. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ms. Cleverly Thompson. Good evening, can you state your name and address, please?
Sure, Shannon Cleverly Thompson, 17 Chippaham Drive. So first, I just wanted to say that I'm here to say thank you to the Board as well as the administrators. I signed up to speak tonight to share my story as to why I care and support that the district remains committed to their work in the area of diversity, equity, and inclusion. I also wanted to share a parent perspective that is positive instead of some of the negative comments that you've received in the past. First, I appreciate having clear definitions of what diversity, equity, and inclusion means for the district. We did not have that in the past, and it helps set expectations for parents in terms of what to expect. And second, I have noticed improvements in the work of the DEI over the year, and I just wanted to share some examples. The first example is one of my sons had to have a significant surgery due to a physical disability, and because of the way the definitions are phrased, that it includes the diversity is not just race, it's all different types of diversity. The way in which the district handled his before, during, and after surgery provided a seamless transition when he was out for three weeks back into the classroom, and the transition back into the classroom was very positive. I don't know what happened while he was out, but he came back in a wheelchair and he had extremely positive, welcoming experiences when he was returned, and that is thanks to the work that was done before, during, and on his return. I've also seen progress in the communications that we've received from the district as well as the high school principal, emails, events, honoring a range of cultural topics, and the social media that points out just how inclusive our district is becoming. So there is work to be done, but I want to say that the way that things are handled is preparing our children for a very increasingly diverse work. And I just want to share an example, one of my sons works at Wegmans, and he was required to attend a DEI training, and when he came home, I was interested in what he learned. And he said, "It was nothing new. We are already learning about DEI in school, the information wasn't that different." I was impressed, and I hope that you, as board members, are proud of the work that are being done because it is preparing our kids and it's having a lasting impact, at least for some of our kids. So I realize that it's a slow journey, infusing DEI practices and values into a system that is built on various inequities, and I realize that no road is without bumps and will be imperfect at times. But I just encourage that the journey not stop, and so the third thing I want to do is advocate for continued support for these efforts and for the progress to continue, and specifically resources to ensure that all of the staff in the district are... that's my three-minute mark? Okay. Have to leave?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Carmen Leonardo. My address is 1915 Penfield Road. I'm here tonight on behalf of Penfield United for Education Excellence. I decided to take up the DEI newsletter challenge to identify implicit bias in the school community, and I expanded that to include microaggressions. We see the Board President's implicit bias show through at the July 12th, October 4th, and December 6th Board of Education meetings. When speakers at the July and December meetings presented topics that the Board Administration preferred to be silenced, they were quickly and tersely shut down, as quickly as the three-minute alarm sounded. However, when a speaker at the October Board Meeting was praising the Board, she was reminded of the three-minute time's up in a soft, angelic voice, and one Board Member is even on the recording saying that the speaker should have been allowed to continue. When the Administration and the Board used their perceived authority to manipulate their own rules but force others to comply, and this is a microaggression, for example, when the superintendent read a prepared statement to rebut a speaker's very relevant comments about implicit bias against students of faith, or demanding speakers say their name and address but prohibit the utterance of a staff member's name, or condoning the display of a totalitarian fist of oppression, which is both an implicit bias and a microaggression. When I was directed to end email communications with Mrs. Potter, that too was an authoritative microaggression. Mrs. Doily, your podcast episode with the district social worker is ripe with implicit bias, both yours and hers. Finally, in the December DEI newsletter, Mrs. Potter, you conveniently left out the celebration of Christmas, as was also admitted in several building emails and bulletin boards. These are examples of a misdirected agenda, implicit bias, and microaggressions. This is why your agenda is and message is bunk. You omit Christianity, which speaks a message of peace and social justice, and is the world's most diverse religion, capturing peoples of every culture, race, and status. How absurd your message becomes when you do this, but you're too blind to see it. Let me tell you that despite your efforts, the vast majority, if not all, students and staff, regardless of their faith, celebrated Christmas with their families and friends. As Jesus Christ said, "Before you ask Me to remove My splinter, which blinds Me, remove the beam that blinds You." Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker this evening is Ms. Scorsone.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Amory Scorsone. I reside at 11 Creekside Circle, Penfield, obviously. I'm here tonight as a mom of twin seventh graders, a community member, and as a steering committee member for Penfield Anti-Racist Alliance. I wanted to start by saying happy holidays, happy new year to you all, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I want to express my continued appreciation and support of the dedicated work that the Board of Education and particularly Dr. Potter doing towards diversity, equity, and inclusion. The community leadership that Monroe County is seeing through Penfield Central School District is starting to take notice. I guess what I want to say is that other school districts are recognizing Penfield for the hard work that we're doing. I understand that for some of us, the progress is not as quick as we would like it for our children, but by and large, we are a beacon of hope in Monroe County. I would like to applaud the school district for demonstrating service to our students. I was a Peace Corps volunteer in Thailand during the year 2000 to 2002. Girls on the Run, the BSU, Mosaic, the LGBTQI groups, did I say Girls on the Run? Are all super... I'm not very eloquent tonight because the last speaker really threw me off. I just want you to know, our community is very supportive, and that we might not be at every single board meeting to express our gratitude and appreciation, but it is wide-felt. And I look very forward to Justin Murphy's presentation tomorrow. I didn't know he was a Penfield grad, so that makes it even more exciting. Some updates on things coming, in April, early April, we'll have a Community Mutual Aid Program, and then in June, we'll have Black Kids Matter. And we're looking for volunteers, so you can email us at penfieldantiracistalliance@gmail.com or you can message us on Facebook. Thank you very much, and I hope 2023 is a year full of peace, love, happiness, and well-being. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, Board members, we're on item six. This evening, we'll be approving the course guide that Mrs. Watt discussed at our last meeting, so I'm not sure if there's any questions on that. So may I have a motion, please, in a second, that the 2023-24 Penfield High School Course Description Guide be approved as presented on December 6, 2022? So moved. Second. Questions or comments on that? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Thank you. Item seven is the Health and Safety Committee Charter, so we all saw this in our packet every year. We do this every year, right? Or is this every two years?
It's every year.
It's every year? Right? Every year? Okay. So we do this annually, the committee meets and we approve the charter in our packet that comes in the packet at our board meeting. So may I please have a motion in a second that the Penfield Health and Safety Committee Charter is approved as submitted? So moved. Second. Any questions or comments on that? All in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Thank you. We're moving on to financial items. As Dan discussed, we reviewed our budget goals at the last meeting, so I may please have a motion in a second that the 2023-24 budget goals, guidelines, and factors be approved as presented at the December 6, 2022, board meeting. So moved. Second. Any questions on that? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Thank you. I can't believe I'm saying 23-24. Why does that feel so weird? Because it is. Right? It's so weird. Okay, so we're moving on to the service contract that Dan had discussed, we're moving back to RIT for graduation this year. Whereas the Board of Education of the Penfield Central School District desires to enter into a facility use and service contract with the Rochester Institute of Technology for the purpose of securing and the provision of the venue facilities and services for the Penfield High School graduation ceremony to be held on June 22, 2023, a copy which is attached. May I please have a motion in a second? So moved. Second. Questions on that? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Thank you.
Thank goodness.
Thank goodness.
Could not handle the stress of the last several years of watching the weather report and wondering if we can pull off Frontier Field.
I was really sad, but I get the weather thing, because that made me very anxious. I was really glad I didn't have to decide, because I probably would have canceled it and made everyone mad.
It was hard.
It was hard. It was really, it was, yeah. Okay, so other financial items, as we discussed, we're going to be approving the audit report for the extra classroom and the corrective action plan that we received. May I please have a motion in a second that the Board of Education accept the extra classroom activities financial report and associated corrective action plan for the year ending June 30, 2022? So moved. Second. Any questions on that? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Thank you. And we'll also be approving the single audit report. May I please have a motion in a second that a Board of Education accepts the single audit report for the year ending June 30, 2022? So moved. Second. Any questions on that one? All those in favor? Beautiful. So we're moving on to policy, I think we have some first-read policies? Yes, okay. So the Policy Committee, I'm going to let you talk to these policies, but we started working on the 8000s, which is the end of our five-year review, so this is kind of the beginning of the ones that we're bringing forth, right? Yeah. And I think we... Do you want to talk?
Sure.
I might know, but you probably remember more than I do.
Yeah, so the first is 8110, which is Curriculum Development Resources Evaluation, although if you look online and take a look at it, it has a lot of strike-throughs. It's really because we're shifting to the Erie-Bosie's sample policy, and so much of the language remains the same, it's just cleanup language and sort of removing some repetitive language that we've been doing along the last 7,000 series all the way through. But you'll see that's really leaning on the Erie policy service sample, which is a policy service the Board's in. And then the other one is 8130, that comes along with the regulation, and that was really shifting to, again, utilizing Erie. Not major changes, but the policy itself that we had was very short, and so it's a little bit longer now, but really focuses on, this is a legal policy around the district civil rights compliance officer, and just... civil rights compliance officer and just, again, around that the district adopts the policy to provide equitable resolutions to complaints of discrimination. And again, very similar to our past policy, but because of the language shift to Erie, we're bringing it to first read to make sure that we can get any feedback. And then the regulation is just more detail. And as a reminder, the regulations can change much faster. They don't need board approval to change, but we typically in our processes have always brought regulations to the board as well to be as transparent as possible, both the board and the community, around our policies and regulations.
So those will be, you all have received a copy, but they'll also be up on the website for public comment before our next meeting.
Yep.
Wonderful. All right, so then we have lots of meetings we've had in the last, because we haven't met since, since December 6, so it's been a while.
It's been a year.
It's been a whole year, oh my gosh. Krista, have you, like, what are you doing?
I just entertain myself sometimes.
Oh, did, were you able to attend legislative? Do you have some things you'd like to share?
Yes, I was able to attend Legislative Committee, and it was an overview of what has been happening. There was two virtual meetings on December 5, which I was not able to make. There was one at 9:00 a.m. and one at 1:00 p.m. where members from various Monroe County Boards met with legislators and brought forth their policies and had discussions and were able to ask questions. The 9:00 a.m., from what I got, the 9:00 a.m. meeting was good in that legislators showed up. The 1:00 p.m. one wasn't so great because their, their representatives showed up instead, and they did not have a lot of information. And so there was a little back and forth about that from, from folks. And then the three big takeaways I got from that meeting, the first was there is, the three policies that were, that got the most attention were lunches. There's going to be some hardcore lobbying to bring back lunches to remove poverty and hunger for our kids, which is wonderful and great. The second one was mental health services. Every single, every single school in Monroe County has seen an increased, and not just a small one, a significant increase in mental health services. Our school counselors are not just doing tier-one work, they're doing tier-two and tier-three, and they need support for that. And I had a moment where I realized, and so they were talking about bringing in, you know, acquiring funds to bring in outside help, right, for our students. And I had a moment, I'm like, wait a minute, Penfield's doing that. Right? So I think we are, we're on it. We're ahead of the game, okay? And we are taking care of our children. So there was that. And then the third one was the buses, right? The no, low emission buses, and that has taken a huge backseat because it's not realistic, not in the near future, because there is a huge amount of money that is needed to have, to do what they're asking. So that has taken a backseat until more information comes up, and nobody is quite worried about that. Yet. So, you know, as of last week. And then, last thing to report is that there's going to be a Legislative Breakfast on February 4 at 8:00 a.m., and where we're all going to meet and meet with the legislators in person and, you know, ask them some questions, network, and chat. Yeah.
Yeah.
So it was, it was a good meeting.
That's great.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the Legislative Breakfast, they've been doing that for a long time for newer board members, and I don't know if we had it during COVID, maybe, we did once, I think, right?
We had it last year.
Or last year, I missed it last year, but it's, it's, it seems intimidating, but it's really, I think it's a nice opportunity to go, and, and usually there's a table leader that helps facilitate conversation, and there's talking points that the committee puts together, but it's, I think it's a nice opportunity if you want it, if you have the time to, to go and, yeah.
I have a comment, too. Krista?
Yeah.
So when the representatives show up, it's not nearly as much fun, and, and it really is not. You think it's not a very effective meeting, but the reps do a lot of their, a lot of that information gathering, and it's another avenue, and that's the whole point behind legislative, as you know, is creating those connections with our legislators. And if you can't meet up with one of them in person, Joe Morelli or Jen Lunsford, you know, whoever, they're people. Keep an eye and keep an ear open to everything that's going on. And the staffers are, they're more help than they appear to be.
Yeah.
So it's a good, even though it's not as much interaction with our representatives per se, you really are making the connection even stronger.
So it's funny that you mentioned that, Catherine, because you just reminded me that one of, one of the folks in the room said that, you know, it's all well and good to meet with representatives, but the folks in the room who are writing the policies are those young'uns, those twenty-something-year-olds, you know? So you really need to interact with them.
They're very, they're very useful and they're very helpful. And then when, when the representative is, is working on our behalf, they have more minutia to report and to make, to fine-tune things. So, yeah, we can't, I always want to talk to the representative for obvious reasons. But then it's, when you realize the bigger picture, it's, it's very valuable.
Yeah. Yeah. So like, Lisa, you said it might be intimidating, it seems intimidating. I am not intimidated at all, because... Well, I mean, I know you're not. No, but here's the thing, and this is why I, like, I'm clean slate. I am there to acquire and learn, acquire information and learn. So, you know, I would talk to a representative, I'd talk to a legis, like, I'd talk to all the people.
You're unique. Trust me. A lot of people find it, they find it, they think that because somebody is elected and representing them, that they're unreachable, but they're not. That's what they're there for, and they're open for that, but some people just, they feel it internally and find it intimidating. So you're just the exception, that's all.
Thanks, Catherine. I'll take it.
Sure.
Yeah. Oh my gosh, awesome. All right, so Audit Committee, do we have anything else other than, I know we had a lot of agenda items about audit?
Dan did it.
As I said, Dan covered the whole thing, basically.
Thanks, Dan. Thanks, Dan. And then Health and Safety, we did approve the Charter, but my guess is there were other things that would, that you would like to share from Health and Safety?
I was unable to attend.
Oh, you were unable to attend?
Nicole did attend.
We talked about a lot of things, probably like walking on ice and being safe, but probably more interesting than that is, we talked about the, the work that needs to be done in a couple of schools to make the entrances more secure, like adding an intercom at Bay Trail, so that, so that you have to identify yourself before you go in and see the security person, and then a secure window at the, here at the high school so that the security person is, has some safety. So we talked about that for a while. We talked about the district-wide plan for safe, safety and short, having shorter versions of those, and the need for different levels of people to have some things committed to memory, because nobody's going to stop and read even a two-page manual in an emergency. Talked about cybersecurity for kids, and a shout-out to the facilities team who came in over Christmas because of frozen ventilators.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Christmas Eve.
A big deal.
Christmas Eve, right?
Yeah.
It was, yeah.
And then apparently they did such, I don't know, I, I don't know if I've ever been in the counseling wing, but apparently they, they did such a great, a great job that you couldn't even tell that it had been flooded.
Really?
Yeah.
Yep, they did. It was like the Titanic in terms of flooding water coming from the second floor to first, but it cleaned up, and again, kudos to our B&amp;G team who came in throughout the break to, to work on some things, so that really cold weather isn't helpful. But again, that's part of what they do, and they do an incredible job with it.
Thank you. Any questions for Nicole on that? Okay, and then we had our Code of Conduct Committee meeting on December 15. I attended that meeting, and Nicole, were you at that meeting? You were at it, right?
I missed it.
You missed that meeting? I couldn't remember. They start to all run together. So Tasha will help me, and you will help me. So we are in the first phase of looking at other codes of conduct from a couple local ones, and then one Syracuse City.
Airport.
Yep. So we spent some time in groups, and again, just a reminder, there are groups that have multiple stakeholders. There's teachers, there's students, there's board members, there's administrators, so it's a really nice, robust group. There's parent stakeholders that, that come. So we spent some time just sort of stepping back, I think, not really, you know, reading every section, but really looking overall at what we liked about these codes of conduct and what maybe we didn't like, and what we'd like to see in our code of conduct. So then we're doing round two of that, right, coming up? Is that right?
We're actually pushing into development.
Oh, okay.
So we have some feedback from the last meeting that'll help to support our initial development for what we might want to have included in our district code of conduct.
Yeah. They were very pretty, which I know sounds funny, but it just was much more readable. It was very clear that some of these codes of conduct were much newer than ours, so, but it was always really great to sit with the students and hear student feedback about clear expectations and, and balancing that need. We, we talk a lot about balancing that need for, you know, having, making sure that we're meeting individual needs, but also having clear expectations.
I would just say, I love the students because I think, again, maybe if you don't work in a school, you'd think that the students would be looking at like, no rules, and instead, they're like, they're, they're pretty tough, you know? They're, they want real clear expectations and, and straightforward rules, and, you know, it's, it makes sense that, again, we look in at Bay Trail students and high school students at the table, really bringing in some, some great perspective. So this process has been, we've got a while to go, but, but it's been great, and appreciate Dr. Potter's work around it with the Children's Institute and, you know, really digging in with the number of stakeholders we have. We fill the, we fill this room for our Code of Conduct Committee.
Yeah, it's a pretty large group, yeah.
It's great.
It's been really great.
Yeah.
Did I miss anything else? No? Questions?
You know, the student perspective, that's like the students who went to the architect. You know, they're, they're living in the high school, they're, they, they see where there's a gap here, this could be improved there, and it's the same with this. So I, the student involvement.
It's really great.
Yeah.
And they're so honest, which I, you know, I can appreciate, and I think that would be intimidating if I were a student with, you know, so many teachers and grownups, and, you know, I really think it's, you know, they've done, the Children's Institute has done a really nice job of, I think, having, you know, making sure everyone feels that their voice can be heard and...
That's great.
Yeah, it's really great. And then DI Corps Committee just met, January 4.
Last night.
Last night.
Oh, last night?
Oh.
Oh, okay. That's just January 4. I was like, last night?
Oh, yeah, strong date. It was just last night.
All right. Who would like to speak on that?
President.
Basically, what we did is we talked about the four strategies of restorative practices, grading for equity, SEL, and MTT-S implementation, and we talked about how those were all connected to our cultures, culturally responsive framework. We discussed the connections. We broke up into groups, and within our group, we, there were five of us, and we had five different articles to read, and we talked about the connections between the articles and the four principles, and I think the big real takeaway is just when our students are kind of at our core of what we're doing, then we're really making the right decisions when we're keeping them at the core. And it was really for preparation for the conference day coming up, but it was really, the articles were great. They were really good, really reminded us of why we do what we do, I think, every day. Do you want to add anything?
Yeah. So, Tasha, Dr. Potter, the title of it was connecting the dots, and that's exactly what we did. So for me, I need to read many times. I need instructions many times before I get it. I did get it eventually, right? Because Dr. Potter's brilliant. Not only does she tell you, but it's there, okay? And I was able to listen and read the instructions, but then it was literally being able to connect the dots of this information, our practices, and, you know, with the culturally responsive, help me.
Framework.
Framework, thank you. And then, what are we doing in our schools? What are the examples based on the articles and what's happening? And we had two, I had two students in my group, and they were, one student said how she is already seeing the shift, and it's in the high school. And I thought the high schoolers were, you know, were going to be the hardest group to, you know, get going with this, but no, she says the culture is shifting, she can actually feel it, not only see it, right? And there was another little one, he wasn't so little, sixth grader, and he really appreciated, like, the clear expectations, right, of what is expected of them, and just listening and speaking, because we came back together at the end. We are really and truly creating a culture of caring. It's not just what you look like on paper. That is just a minute part of it. Great, we can do math, we can read, we can, and also, are you empathetic? Are you aware of who is in the room? Are you understanding other people's backgrounds and where they come from? How can you be a really good citizen of this world? Right? And it's just this culture of caring, because that is the whole student. It's not just your grades and like, okay, what college you're going to end up at, like, big deal, you go to an Ivy League college, like, great. Are you a good person? Do you care about the person who's sitting next to you? Right? So I just felt, I felt really good, and that was, that was a great meeting. Thank you, Tasha. Yeah.
I'm so glad you spoke because you made that so much better.
No, 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 you, listen, we did.
We didn't have any kids in our group.
Teamwork.
Don't blame it on you.
Don't leave me hanging. Yeah, yeah.
I was just, I had to leave early to go to a PAB meeting.
Right.
But, you know, it's that, the piece I just want to hit upon is, is especially as we, you know, speak with our community and our, and our staff and our students, is, is I love the power of the "and," right? So like, and even if, I love when we look at that in terms of the culturally responsive and sustaining framework, one of the priorities is rigorous academics. Like, that, that doesn't go away.
Oh, yeah.
It's the "and," and, so I'll give you kudos, that "and" I would try.
So here's the thing, it's "and also."
And also.
Because "but" negates what you said before.
I know.
And I don't believe in that.
Yeah.
I don't believe in it.
Working on that.
Right. Okay. I'm watching you, Tom.
We got a lot, we got a lot.
So it's "and also."
Yep.
This is also hap, you know?
It's great.
Lisa?
Yes.
A question I have for Tasha, please. Do you find, or do you anticipate, or maybe you just can't know, but with the focus on what Krista was just saying about empathy, and do you care about the one sitting next to you? With, with the uptick in the mental health stresses, are you seeing where that helps? I mean, I would think it would help, but, you know, you might think, I mean, but it might, the reality might be something different, so I...
Absolutely.
Okay.
I think even with one of the strategies that we're employing as a different district, we've talked a lot about social-emotional learning. And when you think about what are the relationships, then, that we're creating, we're fostering with our students and also helping them to foster with their peers. And I think along those lines comes empathy and care and kindness, right? You know, I think one of the things that I heard tonight was even just thinking about how do we, as educators, show up and love our students? And part of that really is why we are all in this work, and as we continue to plug these strategies in and have a district focus on the culturally responsive sustaining education framework, I believe, long-term, what we're starting to see, where folks are really experiencing it, we want to make sure that we're able to continue that and transfer it from here and years to come. So, absolutely.
That's wonderful. I mean, to me, it would make sense that that would be a natural outcome, but the I mean, to me, it would make sense that that would be a natural outcome, but the stress is high, you know, and the job is big. So in terms of where we're at now, I think it's, I just think that's how people should behave anyway, so, yeah.
And what we experienced last night in the meeting, and I know Board Member Ken had mentioned, that this is also going to be then turnkeyed on our superintendent's Conference Day. So the same way that we engaged last night in connecting the dots, our faculty will also, because this is an opportunity for them to also see how the priorities that come from the principles of the CRS are aligned with all of the strategies that both my office and Dr. Maloney's office has continued to help us realize the importance with students at the center, right? So in all that we're doing, we are really doing this work in support of our students, student first, right? And then the whole student.
Right. Thank you.
That just makes my heart happy. I just wrote down, what did I just write down? Creating a culture of caring. And I just love that because, you know, sometimes we're together at this meeting and it goes really well, and then sometimes we have negative comments and we get accused of things, and it feels really awful. But when we come back to the right work and the culture of caring, then I know that we're doing the right thing. So I appreciate all of you that are at this table.
Yes. And we appreciate you, Lisa.
Thank you.
I want to piggyback on that. Thank you for the work that you're doing because, you know, despite the comments that we continue to get, this work is big, right? And, you know, the experiences of our students are at the forefront because it really matters, those microaggressions and that implicit bias that they're experiencing, or on the experiencing end of it, you know, is huge, and it can make all the difference in the world. So thank you for digging in despite, you know, all the harassment and things like that that you've received. I think it's huge, so thank you for all that you do. It really means a lot.
And a lot of community members recognize it.
Yeah, I think it's great that we are seeing that, because I think you can lose sight of that, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay, so I don't think we have unfinished business. Do we have new business tonight? No? All right. So then this meeting is adjourned at 8:03 PM. Do I have a motion, please, in a second?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you.